Going to call this meeting to order for September twenty seventh, it's seven oh one, if we could rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Forward, arc. Guard, halt. Left, face. Free that color.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where which stands on my nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Here, go. Right, face. Forward, arc.
Right, if we could take attendance.
Uh, Burke Meyer.
Here.
Green is here, I think. Richards?
Here.
Moses?
Here.
Dero? Linda Telly?
Here.
Not that. No, I'm not waving my hand. And Knox?
Please excuse.
You have a quorum.
Um, I am going to amend tonight's agenda at the start of closed session, so item four, we're going to put. Item four A, which is to appoint a hearing officer. And then item four B will be to go into closed session. As listed. Um, so with those amendments, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And next we will go to Mr. Holston for our coach recognition tonight.
Yep, right here, excellent, just right here. Alright, good evening, I'm Don Holston, Athletic Director of Anchor Bay High School. Uh, first want to thank the Board of Education and Mr. Jankowski for having us this evening. Uh, we're here to honor an illustrious coaching career in Anchor Bay schools. Chuck Robinette has coached at Anchor Bay for forty-six years. Let me put that into perspective. When Chuck started coaching. I was in second grade. You could buy a new car for thirty-six hundred dollars. Chemical engineers ranked raked in a handsome annual salary of eighteen thousand dollars. And here's the best one. An eight-day, seven-night vacation to Disney, including airfare, was under four hundred dollars. These are not to show Chuck's age. But to illustrate the level of commitment he has given to not just, uh, to Anchor Bay schools, but also this great community as well. Chuck began his coaching career in nineteen seventy-seven, coaching both boys and girls basketball. He would do this until the MHSA moved boys and girls basketball to the same season in the winter. When that happened, Chuck stuck with his varsity girls team, allowing him to see his sons Ryan and Matthew play, and gave him the opportunity to coach his daughter Amanda. In two thousand ten, Chuck retired from teaching, and depending on you, who you ask, Chuck says thirty-four years, his wife says thirty-three and a half. Uh, most would hang up the lanyard and whistle at that time, but Chuck did not. He continued to coach and took the freshman girls program from two thousand ten until this last season. Throughout his forty-six years of coaching. Success was no stranger to Chuck. He coached undefeated teams as well as securing district championships with both boys and girls teams. Coach Robinette tallied over five hundred wins and six hundred plus overall wins with all the teams that he's coached. Well, these numbers are beyond impressive. His commitment to teaching young men and women how to be great people is equally impressive. His wife Patty shared. As his quote-unquote secretary and biggest cheerleader throughout the years, I am immensely proud of him. He has touched so many lives. We can't go anywhere without somebody coming up and saying, hey, coach, or hey, Mr. Robinette, and catching up with him. As a former athlete, coach, and now as an athletic administrator, I would like to thank Coach for his years of selflessness and sacrifice to the student athletes of Anchor Bay. I would like to equally thank his family for sharing him with all of the teams and athletes he mentored for forty-six years. Ladies and gentlemen. Please join me in a round of applause for Chuck Robinette and the indelible coaching career he has had. Congratulations, Chuck.
Thank you.
Our next item is our superintendent's update.
Okay, so. Tonight, I'm just going to walk you through the, the basics of the, the bid that you're going to see for the first phase of the bond. So if you remember, this, this is kind of a layout of the different phases, and then what you'll see is. On the, um. This is what we're, this column right here. Go back here. The first column, this is what we put in the application, and then based off of just some needs of the district and so on, we've kind of rearranged some of the phasing. So then basically this, um. These two phases, this blue line and the gray box be below it. Have been kind of broken into phase one, and then the next phases, just so that we could kind of, um. Handle the construction in, in a more direct format. Then the next column is kind of what has been awarded before this was awarded. Um, at last meeting, this is for all of the, um. Prep that has to be done to move utilities and so on, so you can see kind of out of that, um. About nine point five million was in this phase, about five hundred and eighty-two thousand has come out as to prep the site. And then that left about nine million that was expected to. For our budget for this phase, the first phase of, this is all the addition work. So, I know you can't necessarily see this, but if you look, you can see that. The, the bids went out to about twenty-eight hundred companies. Um, we had a four hundred and thirty-four viewed the bids, a hundred and twenty-four began the application, eighty-seven, um. Bid on the fifteen different areas of this bid package. And so we averaged about six, um, bids for each of the areas, which is good, if you get at least three, you, you're doing well. Then I'll basically walk you through the different fifteen areas. So, for demolition, this is to obviously prepare for the addition. We had several bidders, where the lowest bidder. Was about one-third the cost of the highest bidder, so about a hundred thousand compared to three hundred thousand. And they, it was a complete bid, so there was, our recommendation is to go with, um, the low bidder. The next, um. Area is concrete, and so we, again, low bidder. Had about two-thirds, um, the price versus the high bidder. Complete bid, complete scope, everything was good in their bid, so again, we're recommending the lowest bidder. Uh, the next one, the masonry, this was, um. We are not recommending the low bidder because the, um, the low bidder actually had an incomplete bid, they did not include the, um, winter conditions. And so based on what they included. For their daily rate for winter conditions because of the time of year we're doing it, they would exceed the lowest bid, so we're recommending to go with the next lowest bid, so we're recommending to go with the second lowest bid. Cause they have a complete bid. And they included their, the winter conditions. The next, um. Area is steel, and you can see, these were pretty close in all areas, we're just, all of them were complete bids, we're recommending going with the lowest bid. The next one, general trades, the. The lowest bidder had an incomplete bid, they missed the overhead coiling doors in the auto shop area and, um, some of the other areas. So therefore, the lowest complete bid, we're recommending that, that's from Alcorn. Carpentry, lowest bidder had complete bid, they were all complete bids, you can see the spread of about a hundred and fifty thousand or so. Between the highest and the lowest, so we're recommending the lowest bid. The roofing, this was another interesting one where we had the, the two. Two of the lower bids, um. They, they left out areas, so one left out the media center, the other one, um. It was, they only had a base bid for EPDM, but we had. The, well, technically, the lowest bidder, Zimmer, is going for Duralast, that's what we have on the rest of the roof, so we're recommending that as the lowest bid. Then, the aluminum entrances, we had four bidders. This is, we are recommending, again, to go with the lowest bidder, there, this one will more than likely have an alternate that will add on. Um, it's for safety glass, so there's A1 is an alternate for, um, protective film that goes over it. And then their recommended alternate actually has the safety film built into the glass, so at some point in time when we. We're, we're looking at whether we might put this as part of the other package for safety and security. Um, or we'll come back and, and we'll do a change order to kind of implement, um, one of those two options, depending on how it works out with the other bids for. The safety and security upgrades that we're working on. But otherwise, it's the lowest bidder. And then tile, this is just a small area, where you can see kind of the, the range of bids, so lowest bidder again. And then flooring, we had another one that was incomplete bid, they missed. The entire section of the kitchen in the restaurant. So we're recommending the lowest complete bid. Then, with painting, again, we had. The, the, we're recommending the lowest complete bid, which is substantially lower than the highest, you can see, um, it's about a third of the cost, because the. The lowest bidder missed the epoxy floors in the, um, career areas. Then food service equipment, we're just recommending the lowest bidder, you can see those bids were all fairly close to one another. And then fire suppression, that we're recommending the lowest bidder as well for that. Mechanical, we're recommending the lowest bidder. Um. We did put an alternate in for, um, pump controls, because obviously we want to handle what we had with the flooding and so on, so. We added that as an addendum. And then we're also recommending for electrical, the lowest bidder, and you can see there were eight bids, and there was. This one had the largest, like, kind of spread between the highest and lowest bidder. So overall, our fa- we are budgeted nine million, um, we are pulling out the fire alarm section of that. Because. There's some discrepancy on whether. Um, our current panels are Siemens panels, and can we? Add on to them, or do we need to replace the entire system? So we're going to bid that out as a full replacement, because Siemens is saying that. They don't, they don't know if they can necessarily add on to our current. Um, panel that we have. Our hope was for the addition to just add on, and then handle everything as part of it, when we get to the, the phase where we're doing all of the upgrades for, um, the security and all of that. So our revised budget with that, including. Our contingency is about seven point four million, but our direct cost award is six point six million, so we came in. Well under budget, and, um, if you include the contingency, we're at least eight hundred thousand under, but we're. Um, well ahead of where we thought that we would be when we budgeted and put it in the application. Questions on any of this, on the bid section? Okay. Moving forward, our, here's our deadline is, we really can go out to bid on phase two, so this will be, um. Part of the other now interior classrooms and so on, just. It's not addition work or anything like that, this is just rehabbing. Uh, spaces that are inside the building, that'll go out in middle of next month. And then the little final third phase of the high school will go out in May. We are doing a media center tour, because that's part of the next phase is to do the media centers. Um, especially when we get to the middle schools and, and the elementary schools, so we will have a site visit there. If anybody would like to attend, and then we're also developing, now that we have the physical spaces. Kind of design the technology and the furniture bid that will go out. Um, we need to schedule that based off of, once they meet with the contractors and they have a schedule. Then we'll know when do we want to have things ready for them. So that can be installed, and so that'll be contingent on, um, having this. The, of, uh, schedule from phase one. Other projects that we're working on, these are just updates based off of previous things that were ordered, access controls are in progress, we plan to have that done by Halloween. The high school gym score boards will be in before the season. Um, the, then the transportation fence, that's in progress, that's actually should be wrapped up soon, I will show you a picture in a second. Um, we're still working on the radio system. Because we're so close to Canada, we cannot find a frequency. That is separate from the Canadian frequencies in the, in the US side, and. They don't have a system to do this, so we have to just guess one. And I think we're on our fifth, like. Guess of putting an application and just trying to get that. So we, we just have to keep going until they say, both sides say, yep, this is good. Um, we did the storage building that we was approved at the last board meeting, that was approved, and we'll talk about that in a second too. Um, Lighthouse Media Center renovations, that's, um. In progress, that should be hopefully completed next week. High school chiller replacements that will go in, in the spring. And then the HVAC controls, that's going to begin in October, and that will be done on the spring as well. And then we also have the aquatic center pump repairs, that's been ordered, we're waiting to get that, and then that will go in. This is, we did get the furniture in and installed in Lottie, so this is where Lottie's, now we, we did everything, um. In there, those double doors in the back, that was a computer lab that was open, so we put in the. Doors, so now they, they can kind of have a separate location, all new furniture, carpeting, paint, um, we will be putting in a maker space area. Um, in the top left corner where it's the polished concrete floors, it looks much better in person, so if you get an opportunity. To go through there, it is just a really fabulous space compared to what it was before. We also were able to save the Lottie boat, so our own staff members, um. Made that, it, they kind of refashioned it into a reading area for the kids, so you could have an entire class in that area. Um, and I believe I shared that with you last month. So, our, um, flood damage, so we're working through that. The high school, so the oxygen floor is ordered, we're hoping to get that in the next thirty to forty-five days. That's going to cost about a hundred and sixty-five thousand, that'll, um, our insurance will cover, um, all of these repairs. Pump motor replacement, um, we're also looking to add another pump. On top of that, so that we won't run in the same situation. Um, my understanding is, it's been. What, that floor has been in the oxygen in ninety-nine, and this is the fourth time it's been replaced. Um, Great Oaks water damaged, so we replaced, um, the tile, the gym floor is in progress now, it's just about done, they have everything in there. Um, they just need to finish it, and then. North, we're still waiting, um, to get approval on some of the areas like shelving units and so on. Um. Lighthouse and Alderit and ECC, it was just basically, we extracted the water and they're not recommending, um, that's the next slide, they're not recommending because it's only category one. Storms, so not recommending, um. Changing the carpeting, however, FEMA did declare an emergency. So we did apply for funds, and what we would do is we would replace that carpeting. And more than likely will replace that carpeting with, um, a luxury vinyl tile, so then it. If we it rains like this. More often than we wouldn't have to, um, replace everything, should there be a flood. Questions on any of this? Okay, moving forward, the, um. Storage building, originally we were going to have the storage building. You can't really tell on this one, we, we had the engineers out anyhow for the flooding, so they were looking at. What, and so we had them tell us what's the best location for, um, the storage building that was approved at the last board meeting. So basically, it's going to go where the red X is, so it'll go at the south end of the visitor. They recommended that because naturally, things will naturally drain away, we would have to do more site work, if we put it at the north end. That was originally planned, so that will be underway, um, shortly, so that we can clear everything out of. The areas that are going to be, um, worked on in this first phase, so you'll see that. And then the, the fence, um. So we, we talked about this at the last board meeting, but this is where we ran the new fence, we know in phase five of the entire bond. That we're going to redo the parking area, um, our asphalt and concrete and so on, so we had them square that area off, and then, um. And this is what the fence looks like, so right now, the, the. Road-facing, um, side, we have the, the windscreen up there, and it has our new logo, so it looks very sharp. Any, the other thing, we're kind of keeping an eye on, this is kind of the first half of, um, your legislative update, there is. A part in the budget, it's House Bill forty-three forty-one, where they're going to mandate schools have a drinking water plan, and we, you know, we test, we do all of. The things that we're supposed to, the, the main interesting part of this is, we are already planning on putting filter water bottle stations in. In the bond, but now this would put a minimum, you'd have to have one per one hundred students, so. At, most of our other buildings, it's not an issue at the high school, there would be significant costs, because we don't. We don't have eighteen now, and you'd need at least eighteen or nineteen to put in there. Um, so we'd have to actually run power and do all that, they are putting some money, there's fifty million towards that, but that will be divided up across. All the districts, and you also have to have these filtered, so we're not sure on. Like, if there's going to be a recurring cost, because again, this is a state mandate. They're supposed to pay for it if there's a, a mandate, so technically, they're supposed to pay for the filters and everything, we. To be determined, I, I assume. And that's my update.
When they say, um. That it won't go through unless they provide the funding with it, can they provide any amount of funding, or must they provide full funding?
Well. And the, if you look at the history of the. They generally will have the expectation, they'll, they'll put some nominal funding, and then they'll just wait for districts to sue, that was kind of, if you look at the. Durant lawsuit, the Adair lawsuit, and, and so on, over it.
With regards to the high school not needing extra drinking fountains, is that because it's a two-story building, and it's just location-wise, we're, we're fine?
No, no, you would need more than what we currently have, so it's, it wouldn't be a one-for-one replacement.
No, no, I, I understand that, but I mean, you know, the intent of the, the law that they're trying to put is, if there's like a large spiraling school. Well, you know, they're gonna have classrooms, let's say, a mile stretch, and you want to have drinking fountains throughout the entire length of that, we don't have that problem, because our high school is. You know, geometrically placed in a way where everything's sort of like close together. I, I assume that's, that's probably why we don't really need.
Yeah, that would be my assumption, is that they're trying to just get good coverage across, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, our next item is for the hearing of the public, um, but I don't have any submissions for tonight. Uh, so we'll move on to communications.
No communications.
Okay. Um, moving on to the consent agenda, tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of the minutes from the August twenty-seventh meeting. The personnel report, the financial report, and the bills payable for August of twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Um, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, go ahead and call the roll.
Moses?
Yes.
Ben DeTelling?
Yes.
No? Nope, we're not doing it.
Yes, has been recorded, for the record.
Richards?
Yes.
Green is yes, Burke Meyer?
Yes. Motion passes. Next item, we will go to new business, so we have our award recommendations from Barton Mallow, um, that's Mr. Jankowski just went through. So, he and I discussed whether to put these through, I mean, there's quite a few, we could put them through individually, um. But I just decided, you know, or we can kind of approve them all as one, um. Everybody received these in their packet to go through, and then we kind of just went over them a bit here, so I just kind of figured we would, I would accept a motion, um. Who, you know, how you guys want to go through, if you want to approve. My recommendations as presented and as a whole, or if you want to go through, if you want to start making motions to go one at a time?
If everybody's good, I, I would like to do them all at once, make a motion to approve them all at once.
Okay, so Moses makes a motion to. Accept the award recommendations as presented from Barton Mallow.
A second.
Alright, any other further discussion?
One quick question, so with regards to selecting the contractor who's going to do the work for us. Um, what other considerations were applied besides, you know, the cost of the bidder? Uh, cause I see, I think one of them had it where, you know, the, the second lowest bid was a two hundred thousand dollars, and the lowest one was eight, nine thousand dollars. We didn't go with that one, what, 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 uh, I guess, I believe that's an open question, I'm not going to lead any sort of suggestion. Just kind of curious to know what the process.
Yeah, it's, it's basically completeness of the bid, so on that one, they missed. An entire section of what they were supposed to spec out, and so therefore, they didn't have the full bid, get all the work done. Um, because they. We already had, when we did the, uh. When you spec out the things, we have our general conditions that all of the contractors have to meet, and so that was already. Gone through, the board approved that before, so then, as long as they meet that, they're the lowest price, then, and it's complete, then that's what we use.
So, was there any consideration with regards to? History of work, um, you know, tendencies for safety compliance, uh, craftsmanship and quality of, of jobs being done?
Yeah, they, we do take that into, um, account. Um, the nice thing about having construction managers, they have experience with pretty much everybody who's been bidding, so they can tell you, we've used them on, you know, three jobs, ten jobs, a hundred jobs, or whatever. So all of them were vetted on that, and they interview them, kind of go through. Um, especially on things such as, do they have any concerns in order to be able to carry the work out in a timely manner? And so all of them, you know, pretty much everybody who bids, because we actually do. When they go through, so the bid goes out, then we have, they do a, a virtual meeting with everybody, then they do a walkthrough of the site. So anybody can ask questions, and then they kind of have those questions that are out there if they want to. Ask in the intervening time in order to kind of assemble a bid. And then, so they're, they're vetted all along the entire way, it's about, it's about sixty days that they're working. It's about sixty days that they're working through in order to to go through all those people.
Okay, I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just gonna add for the record as well. Um, so this is for the high school additions and renovations of phase one for the high school. And the total award amount for the bid package is seven million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty cents. Hey, no more discussion. Uh, have you called the roll?
Mr. Roses?
Yes.
Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Burkhire?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
And yes, Mr. Green as well.
Okay, uh, motion passes. Our next item is the safety director's authorization letter. Um, so. We discussed at an earlier board meeting that Mr. Pape, our new director of security. Has worked with the state of Michigan to secure her license to carry her firearm in her new role as our security director. So the state recommends an action of the board to approve her to carry a firearm as a school employee. So our recommendation is to approve Ms. Amanda Depape to carry a firearm in her official capacity as the district employee.
I'd like to motion that we approve that letter.
I'll second it.
Right, any other discussion?
I want to add one, one caveat that I haven't seen discussed is that um. Mr. Pape needs to go through an annual MCOS certification. Whether that's Chesterfield, Fortis, Segley County, I'm sure we can have it done for some nominal charge, but. We want to make sure that she qualifies annually with the firearm she's carrying at school.
Yeah, absolutely. And she has done that already, yes.
Go ahead and call the roll.
Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Burkhire?
Yes.
And Green, yes.
Um, next item of new business is our volunteer appeal. So the board um has a recent policy update. We instituted an appeal process for parents who wish to volunteer or accompany students. For field trips. Current practice is to hold parents to the same restrictions that the state places on district employees. So this appeal process allows each parent to speak about their appeal for up to five minutes, and then the board will vote um on the status of their appeal. Um, so the board did receive the appeal form in their packet uh for this parent. Is Mr. Brooks here tonight? You're welcome to speak if you'd like to. Um, you don't, you certainly don't have to. I mean, we have your paperwork, so. Thank you. Right, um, I will accept a motion, um, whether to approve or not approve the appeal.
So I'll move to accept the appeal. I think we kind of set a precedence, at least some of us, that, you know. Nonviolent things that happened twenty years ago wouldn't be.
Mm-hmm.
An issue.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
And then any other discussion? Go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Dominic?
No.
Mr. Burkhire?
Yes.
My green is yes.
So motion passes and your appeal is approved. Uh, that is the end of new business, so we will go to board comments, ports of pride. I'm gonna go to our student rep because. She was able to make it. We'll start with her.
Hi, good evening. Um. I wanted to thank the board for the opportunity to be here and uh speak about what we are doing in the schools and um. I would like to report something back for this month, but we have not had a meeting just yet. Um, I know there's a lot going on at the high school right now with. Homecoming and Spirit Day, we and everything like that. We're planning everything out, um float building, stuff like that. Um, I do hear small things from the elementary school from my little sister, and it seems as if they're also doing their student council elections and stuff like that too. Um, so I hope that the next meeting will have something to actually report back on, but. So far, so good from the high school. Um, and what I hear from Miss Kitchens, of course, too, everything's all good. Um, so yeah, so parents and the rest of. The residents of the district, um, thank you for this opportunity and um. I hope next month I'll have more to report back on. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for, thank you for being here. Mr. Richards?
I'd like to thank everyone that helped organize the Anchor Bay School District Job Fair. I'd like to thank everyone that participated in the fair as well. I'd like to thank the student council and the link leaders for everything that they did for the freshman orientation. Thank you for welcoming, welcoming our new freshmen. I'd like to recognize the Anchor Bay Fishing Club for hosting the Welcome Back to School event. The fishing club. It has no fee. It's open all students in the district from grade six to twelve. November sixteenth, from six to seven thirty PM, Anchor Bay will be having an explore apprenticeship. Event at the high school, meet trades, local unions, military, all ages are welcome. Congratulations to Billy. I'm not really sure of his last name. It wasn't posted online. He was chosen as student athlete of the month. Billy is currently on the varsity football team, is also part of the JROTC, swimming and diving, track and field. Congratulations, Billy. Thank you to everyone participated in the middle school, North Walkathon. Great job. The homecoming parade is Friday, October sixth, downtown New Baltimore at four thirty PM, and the football game starts at seven. The homecoming dance is Saturday, October seventh, here at the High School Commons. Students, please make good decisions. Powder puff game is Saturday at six, this Saturday at six PM. All proceeds go to Relay for Life. Lottie PTO is holding back to school color run on September thirtieth. Proceeds benefit the Lottie field trips, family events, school assemblies and more. The Anchor Bay College Night is Thursday, October twenty-sixth at the high school from six to seven thirty PM. And I like to do a save the date for everyone. The ABA will be hosting their dueling piano fundraiser on Friday, November third, at Younger's Irish Tavern. All proceeds go to the Anchor Bay School District scholarships. Uh, my points of pride are tonight, where Coach Robinette, congratulations, forty-six years. It's outstanding. Thank you for everything that he's done. Thank you.
I did see the. The powder puff teams practicing out in front of the high school today on my way to the meeting, so. Uh, right in the the front lawn there. So uh they're they're getting ready to go. Should be a good game, and I'm glad they're donating the proceeds to Really for Life. I want to thank uh our teachers and our administrators, uh. Our staff, our janitors, our our bus drivers, everybody with. With really, and at least. What I've been told how smoothly the the year started, considering we had um. You know, a month of rain come down in about an hour. And our schools had water in them. I, we had lakes everywhere. We were, we were not only a lakefront property down on the lake, we were lakefront all the way up. Washington, all the way up County Line. Uh, down Jefferson, on both sides of the road. So you you did an excellent job coordinating, so much appreciated. Uh, I know there's a lot of stress on our teachers already starting coming back. Uh, but uh everything seemed to go off pretty well. Today I was in Lansing and I had a a budget review over. The budget that is coming our way for next year. And there's a couple of things I want to mention, just to make sure that they're on your radar. If they are, great. If not, you know. I'm glad I could help. Uh, the thirty-one O funds, uh. That was the three-year funding to put additional mental resources into the school. For two hundred and forty million dollars. They did not use that two hundred and forty million dollars, and it's still. About half of it. Sitting there. Uh, and the 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 request they ask is that uh that money be left and that we continue to be able to use that. So. Uh, you may not have seen that pop in yet, but you you'll be getting some information on that. We're lobbying hard to make sure we get that money. Thirty-one AA is uh mental health and uh school safety funding. Uh, there is going to be an application window that opens through Nexus beginning on October sixteenth. We already have two hundred and twenty dollars per student coming our way. Uh, it's it's done, it's in the budget. Uh, that could increase if, and that would, the two hundred and twenty is based on every student in the state of Michigan. Every district applying for this and and completing it and getting it done. Uh, so we have another million dollars of money coming our way. That the intention is fifty percent of it is supposed to be spent on on mental health and the other fifty percent is. Uh, for school safety. So, you know, we've had some different conversations about adding additional security resources. We have one sitting here that, you know, we've added. All of that should roll under that and should make it a little bit easier for us to, you know, it's over a million dollars, which is. What do we have, fifty-two hundred students? What's our final enrollment for this year? Fifty-five. It would help if I attend the finance committee meetings. I probably know those numbers, but. Uh, you know, so we're well over a million dollars i- in that, and it could increase as districts either miss this window. Uh, it opens on ten sixteen through Nexus and will be open for six weeks. Uh, and the last one I have is uh thirty-one FF, Frank Frank. Uh, it is a smart internship and SMART stands for Student Mental Health Apprenticeship. Retention and Training. Uh. It is already in the budget and part of the plan is to give fifteen thousand dollar per year stipends. To people, to students that are trying to finish their masters of social. Uh, and then agree to come to the district for a certain amount of time. Um, if they don't stay one to three years, I think I couldn't open the presentation uh on my phone here. But uh there's money out there now that we should be able to get some additional student counselors and psychologists and everything. Through the training process and and the big hiccup that we're seeing in Lansing is that. Uh, school psychologists, you know, they they go get their undergrad, then they go back and get a master's degree, and now they owe seventy-five thousand dollars. And they come to a school district that pays them sixty thousand dollars at best. To to do that job where they go to a healthcare system, they go to, you know, home for the aged, and they're making ninety-eight, you know, ninety, a hundred grand a year. So. It's difficult to compete with that. So at a state level, it's being recognized that we need to do something. To get those additional resources in here, aside from, you know, giving the two hundred and thirty or forty million dollars. That there needs to be an ongoing plan to get, to get these students to come into our our buildings and stay. And retain them in Michigan. So part of it is that they would have to uh graduate from a school in Michigan with their MSW. And then they receive, as they're going through. Uh, their internship. Uh, be paid for it. And then, of course, they've got to stick around in Michigan. I think it's three years to get a complete waiver of of the forty-five thousand dollars of of wages that we would pay them. Anyway, that's all coming down here, your pipe at some point in the next couple of weeks. Um, that's all I think I've got.
Right. Um, the only thing I have is a. An extreme amount of gratification that uh we're recognizing some of our coaches that have done outstanding things over the years. Um. As a student that was here twenty-something years ago, when Mr. Robinette was about halfway through his career. Um, he was one of those guys that, no matter who you were, you knew who Mr. Robinette was. He was at the pep assemblies. He. He bled Anchor Bay red, white. Um, he was an amazing man, and. Even to this day, I see him every year at Relay for Life, raising money for cancer awareness. I mean, the guy has spent his whole life. Trying to make this a better world and uh not just him, but there are tons of coaches from. I'm sure before my time and from my time on that that deserved to be recognized, but. It does my heart glad to see that he got recognized tonight because he is an amazing human being. So thank you and thanks for that award.
I'd just like to echo a little bit about what Mr. Moses said. Thirty-seven years as a basketball coach is quite the dedication to the community. As well as his assistant coach Roy, we pointed out is um someone who had helped him. Uh, do good in the community. And so um, thank you for that. Um, flu season is in the air. As far as I've heard, I think it's kind of gone away a little bit, but remember to get some exercise. Sleep well, take your vitamin C, vitamin D, and uh stay healthy. That's all I got.
And I also want to echo my congratulations to Mr. Robinette and thank you for his dedication to our district and our students. And athletes. Um. And also apparently his wife, who assisted him as well. Um, we had a great start to our school year. Um, as we said, we had some hiccups uh the weekend or so before school started, but. Uh, we were able to get everything going and um didn't have to delay the start of school, but thank you to our. Much of our custodial and maintenance and operations staff that worked around the clock for that. Um, to make sure that we had kids in seats on our planned day. Um, so that is, those are my points of pride. Uh, we'll go to the legislative update.
Legislative update, they are back in session for now. Um. Just other than the water bill that we talked about, there is. We had talked about last board meeting about the prohibited subjects bargaining that were repealed. There is another mandatory subject that they're considering adding um staffing levels for the district. So each um. Association would be able to bargain over how many, what the number of personnel that we have for all that. So that's expected to kind of come down. Um, the other thing is we are expecting a supplemental budget because there are leftover funds, so that's supposed to come through. And then everybody's expecting November ninth that they will end the session. So they'll end it basically two months early in order to get every, one, two things. The house might become deadlocked depending on um two members who are running for mayors in their local areas. So therefore, they wouldn't probably be able to pass anything out of there. And then, secondly, um. They need to end the session early, so then the changes to the presidential election. Um, the primary would be able to move up, so. I'm expecting probably twenty some days left of um the session, so there's before they call it. So that's where we're at with the legislative update.
Okay, um, board committee updates, um, finance committee. Do you want to speak to that?
Uh, finance committee met, um. Yeah, you know, uh, Todd presented a lot of positive. Um, you know, things are looking great. Um, building committee met also. You see, you guys saw a lot of it tonight with with Phil's update with the bidding and things like that. Um, uh, um, yeah, we looked over a lot of the pictures and images um from the flooding. Uh, also our custodial service um did some work here at McDonald. They took down uh some of the walls. Um, you know, for possible future uh classrooms again and things like that too. So we kind of did a little mini tour um here at McDonald. Um. In. Buildings, we also did talk about, kind of a lot we talked about here tonight, um, you know, with the new storage facility. We also talked about, um, we do have a um a second building. And we're just trying to figure out uh the best place to put it right now. So we talked about a couple uh possible locations.
Alright, we're gonna move to what we added. Part four A, um, appointing a hearing officer for our upcoming closed session.
Manor president, I moved at the Board of Education for the Anchor Bay School District, Point Jennifer Starland, through. Law firm PC to serve as our hearing officer for tonight's student disciplinary hearing.
I'll second that.
Any discussions? Now go ahead and call the roll.
Uh, green is yes. Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Vendetta Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Miss Burkhire?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. And then part B, um, under MCL fifteen point two six eight H. Uh, we would like to go into closed session to review and discuss information protected from. Public disclosure under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. Is there a motion to enter closed session?
Um, I'll make the motion.
A second.
Okay, go ahead and call.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Vendetta Lee?
Yes.
Green is yes. Miss Burkhire?
Yes. Okay, motion passes, so we will enter into closed session. It is seven fifty. Um, just for the public, um, after the closed session, um, there may or may not be action, and then the only thing left remaining is to adjourn. And then the only thing left remaining is to adjourn. Okay, it is nine thirty-one. Um, I will accept a motion to return to, return from closed session.
What would, what would you like, Madam President?
Moved by Mr. Vendetta.
There we go.
Supported by Mr. Green.
Do we do a roll call?
Yeah.
Mr. Vendetta Telly?
Yes.
Green is yes. Uh, Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Burkhym?
Yes. Alright, um, I'll entertain, uh, a motion, uh, regarding our closed session.
I'm going to read a proposed resolution for the board's consideration. Whereas the administration has recommended that pursuant to revised school code, section thirteen eleven two, a student whose identity is known to the board, the student be expelled for possessing a dangerous weapon in a weapon-free school zone. School administrators notified the student's parent of the disciplinary recommendation as well as the date, time and place of the disciplinary hearing. Pursuant to the request of the student's parent and is authorized by Michigan Open Meetings Act, section eight one B and eight one H, MCL fifteen point two six eight one B and MCL fifteen point two six eight one H. The disciplinary hearing was conducted in a closed session meeting of the board. The hearing afforded the student and the student's representatives an opportunity to respond to the charge and to present pertinent evidence for the board's consideration. The board has carefully considered all of the evidence produced in this student discipline hearing. Now therefore be it resolved that a preponderance of the evidence does not establish that on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, the student possessed a firearm in a weapon-free school zone. Based on admissions made during the hearing by the student, a preponderance of the evidence establishes that on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, the student possessed a dangerous weapon, a knife with a blade over three inches in a weapon-free school zone. Based on careful consideration of all of the following factors, the board determines that expulsion is warranted. The student's age, the student's disciplinary history, whether the student has a disability, the seriousness of the behavior, whether the behavior posed a safety risk, whether restorative practices are a better option and whether lesser interventions would address the behavior. The student is permanently expelled from the district, subject to possible reinstatement under revised school code, section thirteen eleven six. During the time of the expulsion, the student may not be on school grounds or attend any functions at the district without prior written approval from an appropriate administrator. Administrators are directed to revert, to refer the student to the county department of social services or the county community mental health agency and to notify the student's parent of the referral within three calendar days of this resolution. Consistent with revised school code sections eleven A and thirteen eleven one, the board finds that the interests of the district are served by this resolution. Consistent with the board's actions taken this date, administration shall promptly meet with the student's parent to determine those appropriate educational services to which the student may be entitled under state and federal law. Administrators are directed and authorized to implement all terms of this resolution and are delegated all necessary authority to do so. All resolutions and parts of resolutions that conflict with the provisions of this resolution are hereby rescinded.
I'll make a, make a motion to accept the resolution as presented.
I will second.
Um, further discussion? Go ahead and call roll.
Green, yes. Vendetta Telly?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mrs. Burkhym?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Um, and that is all we have, so I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make motion to adjourn.
Their support?
Yes, support.
I gotta support it myself.
Unfortunately, you can't do that.
We're hearing longer, I will.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, motion carries. Um, meeting is adjourned at nine thirty-five.